I think we're just gonna wait a minute or two to make sure everyone's logging on.
Good evening, everybody.
Yeah, it's a good idea because I had to go through the other link, not the first one.
You had problems, Inta?
Yep, but I finally did it. I have problems, I solve them all the time. I found out today an interesting thing. We have got eighty-three thousand members in RTO ER in Ontario alone. And of them, two hundred of them are over a hundred years old.
Wow.
Yes, teachers live a long time. Must be the fun we've had.
What's their pension worth now, Inta? Because they, when they retired, their pension would have been pretty low, right?
Yes, you're right. Yes, very low. Yeah. It's scary how low it is.
Do we want to give it another minute and then we can start?
I think we're pretty good.
Okay, we'll start then. Good evening. Welcome to our virtual town hall for Hamilton. This is one of twelve that have been held so far. And we'll start off with my, sorry, I'm Janina Lebon, the co-chair. And I will have my co-chair, Ralph Gerstenberger, do the land acknowledgement. Ralph?
Thank you, Janina. So this is the City of Hamilton Land Acknowledgement. The City of Hamilton is situated upon the traditional territories of the Erie, Neutral, Huron, Wendat, Haudenosaunee, and Mississauga. This land is covered by the dish with one spoon Wampeum Belt Covenant, which was an agreement between the Haudenosaunee and the Chenabik to share and care for the resources around the Great Lakes. We further acknowledge that this land is covered by the Between the Lakes Purchase of seventeen ninety-two, between the Crown and the Mississauga of the Credit First Nations. Today, the City of Hamilton is home to many indigenous people from across Turtle Island. And we recognize that we must do more to learn about the rich history of this land so that we can better understand our rules as residents, neighbors, partners, and caretakers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Britt, can you enable closed captioning?
Um, yeah, I believe it's going. Can someone correct that for me? Is anyone else able to see the?
It's working. Somebody in the chat. Now, if you have questions, could you please put them in the chat? There will be a Q and A after the speakers. And then, or use the raised hand. I would like to take this moment to remember Christine Collins from the Ottawa Health Coalition. She died on the weekend. Her brother was in a Rivera home. And she discovered, much to her anger, that Rivera is funded by the PSAC pensions. So she got involved. But prior to that, she was involved in the PSAC. She was a national president of the Union of Canadian Transportation Workers. She was quite active, and she will be missed. My recollection of Christine was at my first convention where the PSAC revised their structure and introduced a region and had planned to drop the NCR. And she was from the NCR. Needless to say, the NCR has a region, and she was quite passionate. She'll be remembered. Now, again, I'm welcoming you to this. This is, as I said, one of twelve in the first section. In the new year, there will be others. And a brief look at Hamilton, and then our speakers will fill in the rest. Public hospitals are overwhelmed. We've got ER closures everywhere. And one of the worst was Hamilton in early October. The pediatric hospitals are overwhelmed. McMaster Children's missing cribs, missing medication, missing staff. One, they were at one hundred and forty percent capacity, which is not good. The ICUs in general are overwhelmed. And if you get the spectator, Joanna Frekett writes at least one or two stories a week listing that. Children have been transferred to adult ICUs. Teens have been transferred to the adult ICUs. We even had a case where a three-year-old child here in Hamilton, a burn victim, had to be transferred to London Hospital. And our paramedics are stretched. So at one occasion, we had to depend on Oakville to send an ambulance down here. So needless to say, it is a problem. And to quote Noam Chomsky, "The standard technique of privatization: defund, make things, things don't work, make sure people get angry, and then you hand them over to be privatized." And I think that that's the end goal for Ford and his government. So on that note, I will start with Ross Sutherland, who is the Chair of the Board for the Ontario Health Coalition, a retired nurse, and the author of False Positives. Ross?
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Janine. It's just a pleasure to be here, representing the board and to be in Hamilton with such a great group of people. And it's really nice to see so many people out. I really want to welcome you to this campaign to strengthen and protect our public hospitals. We've wrapped up this campaign, the Ontario Health Coalition, because the Ford government has a very aggressive agenda to cut back on public health care in favor of shifting work to private for-profit companies. We've seen it in all sectors of the economy: home care, long-term care, Bill Seven, which is forcing the elderly and disabled out of hospitals or writing their privacy rights, Bill One Twenty Four, that's the one percent wage cap bill that was just overturned in court, but the government is going to continue fighting that and appeal it. And our hospitals and our emergency departments, particularly in smaller communities, are at increased risk. In the past summer and fall, there have been almost one hundred temporary closures of emergency departments across Ontario, as well as closures of ICUs, birthing units, and other services because we can't staff them. You know, this is unprecedented. You know, I've been involved in nursing for better part of thirty years, and I've never seen anything like this. And I think everybody else will say that. Our large hospitals, the ones that are managing to stay open are running at a hundred percent capacity, often up to a hundred and twenty percent or more. That means that every bed is full. You can't get people out of emergency because there are no beds, which means that ambulances back up. And then there's no ambulances in the community. I come from a small community north of Kingston, and all of our ambulances, almost all the time, are tied up in Kingston, meeting the urban population or waiting at the hospital. And we've seen a dramatic increase in the number of our volunteer and fire and rescue service people responding to medical emergencies because there's been no ambulances available within fifteen minutes of getting to the person. And recently, we've had pediatric hospitals thrown into crisis, you know, with the redirecting children to adult hospitals. That's why we're holding these emergency town halls. It's the first step in a campaign to force the government to stop and back down. And we know we can do that. We've done it before. We've worked with local communities to save emergency departments in Wallaceburg, St. Joseph's Island, St. Mary's, and other places. We've saved birthing units in Midland and Leamington. We've stopped the closure of hospitals in Fort Coburn and Fort Erie, stopped the closure of thoracic surgery in Windsor, won the reopening of many beds in Windsor and Cornwall. And every time the government has tried to go on a major campaign of privatizing hospital, public hospital services, we've managed to stop them. And so far, all across the province, these town halls have been very well attended, just like this one. Tens, twenties, dozens, literally hundreds of people, we've had up to six hundred people at a meeting, are coming out because people want to rally, protect their local services, and change the province's policy direction. And people are standing up because this is truly unprecedented crisis in our hospitals. It's a situation that's far from normal, and it is completely unacceptable. It's also worth noting that it's a crisis that has been a long time in coming. For many years, the Ontario Health Coalition and other organizations have been warning of a looming staffing crisis, a shortage of hospital beds, and problems with the private delivery of services. But government after government has really done nothing. In Ontario, we have the fewest hospital beds per person of any province in Canada. And Canada has the lowest number of hospital beds of every developed, oh, we should say, the third lowest number of hospital beds of every developed capitalist economy. Ontario has had the most radical downsizing of public hospitals anywhere and almost anywhere in the world. One way to look at it is that we're the lowest of the low. In turn, smaller hospitals have been particularly strongly affected with services cut and rationing across health regions. Ontario also funds our hospitals at the lowest rate of any province in Canada. It is, and this is on purpose to force hospitals to downsize and ration their services. One perspective on this is that for the past forty years, we've seen expanded privatization of healthcare services. And for the past forty years, we've seen a steady erosion of healthcare until the pandemic pushed our staff and our services over the cliff. What is staggering to the Health Coalition is how little the provincial government is doing to solve the crisis. Yes, around the world, the pandemic has taken a brutal toll on hospital staff, but in Ontario, the problems are extreme. And to make matters worse, this year, the budget contains a real, a small but real cut in actual dollars to hospitals. It's not only an increase that's less than inflation, it is an actual dollar cut in budgeting to hospitals. And this is a choice made by the Ford government to underfund the healthcare system. When the Ford government says that money won't make a difference, that's totally untrue. While money is not the only needed solution, many of the needed changes can only happen with increased funds. Instead, the government's plan is to privatize the hospitals and shift resources to for-profit companies. In Hamilton, as in other communities, our local hospitals have been built by the community over the last hundred years. People have personally donated, given through their local taxes, donated through payroll deductions, volunteered, and literally built their public hospital, is hospitals as an essential and vital part of our communities. Ford's plan is to dismantle this. Privatizing our public hospitals and failing to address the staffing crisis are twin issues. We are asking people to increase the pressure on the government, to step up action, to act with urgency that the situation demands, to support our local hospitals, to stop the closures, to stop privatizing them, and to use qualified staff. I'm going to let other people now talk more about the details. Britt, one of our campaign assistants will be going over the exact plans that the Ontario Health Coalition has provincially, which we would love you to join in on. And I know that other people will be talking about what you can do in Hamilton. So thank you again for coming out tonight, and thank you for your interest in standing up and fighting for our public hospitals.
Thank you, Ross. Highly informative, and we definitely need to know what's going on. So our next speaker is Grace Piers, who will talk about her experiences in the hospital system.
Thanks, Janina, especially for the perfect pronunciation of my last name. Rarely happens. So thank you to Janina for hosting and for the Ontario Health Coalition, who does a fantastic job. Everyone on this call needs to know how hard they work, and they work on donations, and you're absolutely instrumental in keeping the community engaged, and their campaigns are fantastic. And I've had the pleasure of joining in in a few of them so far, and I plan to do more. So as I said before, my name is Grace Piers. I'm an RN. I've worked in emergency departments throughout North America, including the United States, for over twenty-one years now, which is crazy to think. And I'm going to speak to today as an RN, as a union leader for ONA, who represents sixty-eight thousand nurses across the province, eighteen thousand nursing students. But I'm also going to speak to you as an Ontarian, Hamiltonian, and also a consumer of healthcare. So somebody mentioned, I think it was Jan in the chat, so I'll spit a few stats out, but I'll mostly off-script. So one stat, she mentioned, we have the lowest nurse-patient ratio in the country, and she's correct. Canada-wide, there's eight hundred and thirty RNs per one hundred thousand. Here in Ontario, we are six hundred and sixty-eight per one hundred thousand. We spend the least, we get the least. At this point, studies are saying that we're around twenty-five thousand RNs short at this point. What does that look like? I think Jan also mentioned that it translates into ridiculous nurse-patient ratios. So I don't know if anybody on this has been a patient recently. I have. And it looks like when you're on a medicine unit, one nurse has about nine patients as opposed to when it used to be around four in the Golden Age. Actually, I recognize some faces on here, too. Maybe some of them work where I work. Anyway, so, yes, and also in the ICU. When you're at your sickest, right? Like, you've got a nurse who's looking care, taking care of three or four other patients at the same time. So we hear about this. It's terrible. So what also has happened? So Doug Ford has made it so difficult to be a nurse in terms of just the staffing crisis, which was obviously made worse by Bill One Twenty Four, which, yes, was overturned. However, he will fight. In my opinion, this is where I take a turn. So there's all the doom and gloom. So where I take a turn is I look at the recent collective action by QP and the fantastic rallying we saw, and the fact that collective action works. And this is an example. We've got a hundred people here, they're on time, and everybody is engaged, and it's working. I'm seeing things switch direction. Unionism is bigger than it's ever been. Group action, it's bigger than it's ever been. My daughter told me the other day, it's really cool to be in a union or part of a group. So this is where we start. We start here. And to be specific to Hamilton, it was already mentioned once. There's going to be a rally December seventh. So this one is in relation to the OR at the Hamilton General. So December seventh, there's a rally at Hamilton General at three-thirty till six. And what's happening is, is they're replacing RNs in the operating room with an attendant. So an OR is an important place. You're getting surgery done. You don't, you know, you want somebody there that knows the deal. But they're just, the Ford government has made it so hard, and now they're replacing RNs with, you know, all kinds of things and just trying to take shortcuts. So anyway, all of this is taking a toll. But while Ford fights nurses, nurses are going to fight for you and for healthcare and public healthcare in general. I'll just end by saying that I did work in the US for years. I did see the personal toll that it took to have a, like, a private system. And I just saw how hard it was for people to make the financial decisions to put their health or their bills or food on the table. And as Canadians, we voted Tommy Douglas as our greatest Canadian, you know? It's something that I remember growing up and hearing, like, the thing we're most proud of is our system, and it's worth protecting. I know everyone on this call is of the same mind, and I'm just happy to see so many people. And I look forward to seeing you on the streets, signing petitions, emailing MPPs, because it works. And that's, that's my spiel. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Grace. You're quite right. Working together, while the expression is united, we stand. And that's what we have to do. Our next speaker is very well-known. Michael Hurley is the president of Ocho, the Ontario Council of Hospital Unions with QP, and has been around for a long time, has led many a battle, and continues to do so. Michael?
Thank you, Janine, and, excuse me. And thank you very much. It's such an honor to be invited to participate in a meeting of such a wonderful group of activists. I know a lot of you from over the years, and you have had such stunning success in your communities. St. Peter's wouldn't be operating now. It would have been closed under the Harris government, for example. You stopped that, and you've been part of a movement that's done so much more provincially. So it's a real, real privilege. Excuse me. The Minister of Health would have you believe that everything that's happening now in the Ontario hospital system is planned, that the pediatric and other service closures, the closures of eighty ERs over the course of the summer, all planned. Ontario Health has told hospitals to expect to remain operating at a hundred and twenty percent capacity until March of twenty-twenty-three. All planned. Personally, I think it's a train wreck, and it's deliberate. In the first two quarters of twenty-twenty-two, the Ford government underspent in healthcare by eight-hundred-and-twenty-one million dollars. Two-hundred-and-sixty thousand people are supposed to work in the Ontario hospital system, but we're forty-seven thousand staff short, and we're losing fifteen percent of the staff complement every year. And workloads for the people who remain are just impossible. Our hospitals, and you know, you can see this at McMaster, you can see this at all of your sites across Hamilton and Burlington, operate at over a hundred percent occupancy with staffing levels that are only able to provide coverage, really safely for eighty percent of the patients. For the hospital staff, there's constant pressure to work additional shifts and overtime to work sick and injured. There isn't enough time to spend providing care to each patient. Care is reduced to medication and treatment because that's all there is time for. And over time, this takes a heavy toll on morale. The hospital workforce is exhausted after three years of toiling through the pandemic. The hospital workforce is demoralized because the Ford government has, on the one hand, cut its wages. And then when that initiative was overturned by the courts, has said that it will appeal and probably appeal all the way to the Supreme Court, making us crawl effectively through broken glass to get a wage increase. And that is one of the reasons why people are leaving. In any other profession that had shortages, and there are shortages of every classification in Ontario hospitals, employers would pay more to attract new workers and retain the ones they have now. But our employers are forbidden from doing that at the moment. For us to retain hospital staff, we need to bring the average patient-to-staff ratio up to at least the average in Canada, up from the bottom. We estimate that that would take an investment of about two billion dollars, but it would make an enormous difference, and it would meet the demands of an aging and growing population. Stopping the hemorrhage of hospital staff by giving hope that workloads and the quality of patient care will improve significantly, and that they will be fairly treated, is a key starting point. You would do these things if you wanted to maintain a viable public hospital system. But we know that the Ford government plans to invest substantially to pull diagnostics and surgeries out of public hospitals and into private clinics and into private hospitals. Even though the death rates in private clinics and private hospitals are higher, outcomes are less successful, costs are much higher, opening a market by commercializing hospital surgeries and other procedures is a top priority for the Ford government. They've been clear about that. And it's in this context that the deliberate understaffing in our hospitals, the degraded compensation for the workforce, and the impossible workloads should be viewed. All these things are not accidents, but deliberately planned events to create a backlog of surgeries and other procedures and open the door to privatization. The Minister of Health tries to quiet critics by suggesting that closing a hundred community ERs over the summer, and now the huge pressures at pediatric and other hospitals are not crises but planned events. And on the one hand, any sane person would say, surely no one would plan such system failures. But on the other hand, we know that the government is using the current weakness of the public hospital system against it to privatize the backlog of surgeries and diagnostics. And the fact that the Minister of Health has never tabled a plan to deal with the hospital staffing crisis, but simply denies it, tells you a lot of what you need to know. We know that this can be a road from which there may be no turning back. And so we're here today, resolved to defend our public hospital system from the latest attempt to privatize it. And we do that with a real sense of history that reminds us that we stopped the privatization of cancer care under the previous conservative government, and we stopped the privatization of ambulance services under the previous conservative government in the nineteen nineties. We can do it, and we will do it again. An aging and growing population is still a population deserving of quality care. A tired and demoralized workforce can be given hope and renewed energy. A hospital system pruned almost to the point of collapse can be brought back to vibrancy. It is vital that we set out expectations for the government, and as importantly, for the citizens of Hamilton and Ontario. It's vital that we leave here tonight, committed, each according to our capacity, to do what we can to battle, to preserve our public hospital system in this province from privatization. I want you to know that you can count on the people who are working in our hospitals to be on the front lines, shoulder to shoulder with you, fighting alongside you as we push these plans back. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you for your impassioned talk. As usual, you hit the highlights. Just as a comment, that two billion dollars? Just think, if he hadn't given back the license plate fees, that would have been two-point-two billion dollars, which could have been covered. And our last speaker, Sarah LaBelle. Sarah is a medical lab technologist. She works out of Lake Ridge Hospital near, in Oshawa. And she is the Chair of the Health Professionals Division of UPSU. And Sarah, floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Difficult act to follow always. When Michael gives us the numbers like that, it's really, you know, hard-hitting and appreciate all the work that you do, Michael Hurley, on behalf of your members across the province and everyone who's here tonight. I just want to give a few statistics here in the context of just COVID. I know we're probably all COVID out, and no one more than healthcare workers who have been working in our public hospitals delivering care. But in the United States, the total number of deaths of COVID is up over one-point-one million. In India, over five-hundred-and-thirty thousand. In Brazil, a country that ignored public health orders and had a country that ignored that there was actually a respiratory disease. Six-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand have died from COVID. And I just want to point out that these countries are all either fully private or a mix of public-private. And so I don't think it's any, you know, accident that countries that have a mix, a high mix of, you know, public versus private healthcare or totally private healthcare, that they had some of the highest deaths in the world for COVID-nineteen. Because it was, you know, it really laid bare the health inequities when you don't invest in a public healthcare system. The people that were most impacted worldwide were people who were racialized, indigenous communities, people who were impoverished, who, you know, did not have the same access as others would. And so our public healthcare system that we built and decided collectively that we would pay taxes in order to, you know, provide care to everyone based on need, not the size of their wallet, is something that we should protect. is something that we should protect and is something that we should vehemently oppose any government privatizing those services. So in Cana, in Ontario, what we saw in the pandemic is, you know, some of the health inequities, our members were the ones across the province in our public hospitals, our members in the public healthcare systems were the ones that were filling in the gaps in communities where this government fell short. In indigenous communities, our members were going and volunteering to do vaccine clinics. In, in what we were seeing in, um, racialized communities, we were seeing a lot of our members who were doing traveling clinics in order to provide vaccines, respiratory therapists, pharmacists, dieticians, social workers, physiotherapists, all who were providing care frontline in our hospitals were volunteering to do hours in order to ensure that people were getting vaccinated. And that's what a public healthcare system does. A public healthcare syst- system steps in every single day to deliver services. And I'm really in awe of all of the frontline healthcare workers, my colleagues and friends and the people that I have the honor and the privilege to represent across this province, more than twenty-five thousand professionals who continue to come in to work every single day and go above and beyond. And I, I cannot believe the work that they are putting in in order to deliver services. In the beginning of the pandemic, prior to hitting the really high numbers, we had respiratory therapists that were taking care of fi- just over five patients per respiratory therapist in ICUs. And in the height of the pandemic, they were seeing eleven point two patients per respiratory therapist. In December of two thousand and twenty, we had, uh, hospitals bringing in social workers in, in employment assistance uh, programs in order to counsel our members on having to make the decision on whether, who they could save and who they couldn't save. And that's what a beleaguered healthcare system looks like. And it's what a private healthcare system wants to take out of our healthcare system is the people that delivered that service. They want to pull them out of the public healthcare system into private surgeries and diagnostic clinics in order to provide care for those that can pay. They make no mistake, there will not be any increase in staff across the province in creating a parallel system. All it will do is take those respiratory therapists, perfusionists, anesthesia assistants, uh, medical laboratory technologists, medical radiation technologists, social workers, all of them will be taken out of the public healthcare system to provide care in the private healthcare system that will prioritize patients based on their health and on their wealth. And we have seen that play out across Canada. We saw that in the Camby case in that the people that could pay were the ones that were triaged and took, got to the front of the line. And those that needed the care were left in the public system on long wait lists. The Camby clinic was taking beds out of the public healthcare system. Hospitals were holding beds for Brian Day to provide his surgeries in private suites in order to ensure if one of his patients required a bed, they would have access to a bed. So that took a bed out of the public healthcare system. That's what we're going to see in the province of Ontario. Sholdice Hospital, which is a pu- private hospital that delivers hernia surgeries, they assess their patients based on their health. If they are in tip-top shape, they will be approved to get a hernia surgery. But those that may have coma, comorbidities, maybe overweight, they will not be seen in a private system. They will then be waiting in the public system that no longer has the health professionals. Every single surgical suite in the province of Ontario has an anesthesia assistant, they have perfusionists, they have OR techs, medical laboratory technologists are there to cross match units of blood and transfuse if required. Medical radiation technologists are there to provide access to CTs, to X-rays if needed, nuclear medicine, MRIs, all of those are, are working in our public healthcare system. And if we remove them from our public healthcare system, our waitlist will go up. And we will see that in every single hospital across the province if we privatize surgeries and diagnostics. In the pandemic, up until August of two thousand and twenty, the province of Ontario paid for hu- public hospitals to provide COVID testing. They stopped doing that in August of two thousand and twenty-one. By December of two thousand and twenty-one, the only people that could get access to a COVID test were people who could pay and they were paying anywheres from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars for a COVID test. And there were people who needed access to a COVID test in order to see their family members and loved ones in long-term care. They could not get access to a test. The people that were getting access were those that, you know, could afford to travel, those that were wealthy enough to pay exorbitant flight fees at a time when, you know, airlines were, were, you know, take gouging people. Those were the ones that got COVID tests. But people who wanted to care for their loved ones in long-term care and see them over Christmas could not get access to a COVID test. And that's what a private system looks like. Those that need it can't get it. And those who have the money will get access first. So our public healthcare system that we have built, built in Canada and the health professionals that have helped build it and have delivered services in it are, as much as Michael said, are willing to stand shoulder to shoulder with all of you to defend it. Our members value the services that they provide in their communities. They are proud. They are so proud to have, you know, served their communities in the largest pandemic that we have ever seen in our lives. And they were proud to ensure that they kept and their, their colleagues and coworkers and family members and communities safe during the pandemic. And they will not allow this government to dismantle the public healthcare system that we built, that we pay taxes for and that help decrease inequities in healthcare. And we will ensure that we're there standing alongside the rest of you to defend those services and to ensure that we're rebuilding our public healthcare system by investing in staff rather than investing in a parallel system that will reap profits out of the system and, and triage people based on how, wealth rather than on their, their healthcare needs. So thank you so much to all of you that have been, have come tonight. And I'm looking forward to all of the rallies as we continue to fight to protect healthcare. And if what we saw with the, you know, Bill twenty-eight and all of the organizing that was done by the education workers and how strong and brave that they were to, you know, give a call to action to all of us to stand together collectively to defend public education and to ensure that this government was pushed back on terrible legislation. We can do it again. That energy that they brought and that excitement that we all felt in watching, you know, some of the lowest waged workers in the province who, you know, took on Goliath and won, it's, it's really encouraging and all of the one wins that we've had over the years in defending public healthcares, as Michael mentioned, it, they inspire all of us and we will work together. And there's no doubt in my mind that we're going to have another big win in the new year and this big win is going to be fighting back on the privatization of our healthcare services.
Thank you very much. Very inspiring, encouraging. And just to give you a little news bit, BC government has taken tell us, what the heck is its name? Tell us life plus the court. Uh, apparently they charge four thousand dollars a year for a fee. So BC has started another case comparable probably to Camby or more. So it's a battle we have to do. And I guess at this point, questions, comments? I've, there's, there was a comment, question in the chat. I'm not sure of the waitlists, but we can try to find out. And insurance providers, yes. When did Ontario hospitals start using physician assistants? Does anybody know? Okay, we'll find out. Um, I see Alexander has his hand up.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, let me make sure I pronounce it right, Janina. Um, so when Ross was speaking, uh, as this, I'm a rookie at this, uh, this whole group, so I, um, I may be asking a stupid question, but
No stupid, no stupid questions.
Thank you. Um, so Ross, when you talked about, and you mentioned it, and somebody else also mentioned the fact that, you know, they tried to do this in the past and we stopped them. What did we do to stop them? So I, I kept asking myself, I, you know, how, how did we stop them? What, what, you know, did we do?
Well, uh, the one that immediately comes to my mind is we held, um, uh, plebiscites all across the province. I know that in Kingston, we held a plebiscite that we had, uh, ten thousand people, ten thousand people come out to vote. We had a hundred and twenty-five, uh, stores and like, it, it became just a huge community movement. And basically they were held in every, um, major town or city across the province. I mean, what, what all this always comes down to is communities organizing. And there's a bunch of different ways to do it. And in a few minutes, we'll get, we're to talk about some ideas that we've got for the moment. Some of them are province, province-wide ones, like the, the plebiscites for province-wide, the million healthcare defenders is what we're just going to talk about in a minute. And that will be province-wide. Some of them are local, because we have local struggles that are often the, the sort of pivot, the pivot point where they're starting to do it. So they're going to try closing this emergency or try to open this, uh, private clinic here and move stuff out of the hospital there. Uh, so you take on that particular struggle. And, um, you know, we've lost some and we've won some in terms of individual fights, but we've had some of these major movements. We have actually turned back. And that's, I think, you know, unfortunately, we've been fighting this for, you know, we, we did quite well in terms of a public healthcare system until the mid nineties. And we were really building a, a good system. And then for a whole series of reasons, which is a, is a two-hour-long political economy lecture. Uh, you know, we've had a bit of a swing and we've had this rise in really right-wing governments, which is constantly pushing to privatize public services. Uh, and I think that one of the reasons we in Canada and in Ontario still have a substantial public and, and, and healthcare system is because the people have been fighting for it. Uh, unfortunately, they've been in the government more often than us. And so they have been chipping away at the edges. And, but we keep fighting because that will change too.
Uh, and out of curiosity, did the opposition party have? Did they play a role? Did, did they help?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I mean, I, I, you know, they, they absolutely did. Um, you know, I mean, we've had mixed government, the hospital funding has dropped pretty consistently since ninety-five. So we've had both liberal and conservative governments since then. Was a short period of time in the late, uh, twenty teens, I think seventeen and eighteen, when the liberal government did increase hospital funding, but other than that, it's been a fairly stead- steady decline. But certainly right now, I can say that both the Liberals, the NDP, all, all three, I guess, I shouldn't say both, the three, the Liberals, NDP and the Green Party are all very strongly on board, supporting a public healthcare system. And we appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
To the question in the chat about you don't have an MPP because Andrea is gone. Her office is still functioning. You can write them and they will take care or help you with your problem. I had to do that. Mine got referred to Wayne Gates, who was the long-term care critic. But there are ways. So I have Ralph and then Henry.
Thanks, uh, Janina. I just wanted to, uh, try to emphasize what's happening in Hamilton next week, uh, on, I think it was Monday night. Janine and I and some members of the Hamilton Health Coalition participated in a political action committee meeting of the Hamilton District Labor Council. And there were some, uh, there was a presentation by some nurses on what's happening with their, uh, operating room, uh, situation. And I, I have to say, I was a little bit shocked that, first of all, somebody would even consider doing what's being proposed, much less try to implement it. And the way I understood it was, I mean, you have nurses, RNs, you know, they have four years university. You have RPNs have two years. And then, uh, if they want to, if they're working in a operating room, they need an extra twelve weeks of scrub nurse training, whatever. And so someone has, uh, come up with the idea that, uh, well, we can just take Joe Blow or Nancy Jo off the street and give them a twelve-week course and then they can work in the operating room. And we, we don't need, we don't have to have nurses there. We're, you know, we can cut back. And if we're short, we can just have someone with a twelve-week course in an operating room. And, and I, I was quite shocked. And everyone I've talked to since then, and today we just had a, uh, meeting of our, uh, uh, our pensioners group at Local Ten O Five. And it's when you explain it to them, they're like, everyone's like, are you kidding? Like you're going to go into an operating room, you're going to be sedated and then you're not sure the person there is, if they're a qualified nurse or not, or is it, it was, it's just like unbelievable. So I think, uh, anyway, I appreciate the initiative that the uh, ONA is taking by organizing this rally at the Hamilton General next Wednesday. And we're definitely, our, our pensioners are definitely coming, Ten O Five is going to be there. And I think anyone who's, finds out what's actually happening, they'd have to be outraged that somebody's even, like, even to consider it. And, uh, you know, all I could think of is that's, you can just see that there's, they're trying to turn this, uh, healthcare system into a, into a business. So someone's there, you know, look Isaac or someone is saying, oh, well, listen, if we replace the nurses with someone, we'll pay them twenty bucks an hour because they took a twelve-week course and the, they're Bob's your uncle. And then not worry about, well, what if something happens and all of a sudden you need the nurse's expertise? And so there, that part is like, oh, well, we'll, you know, who cares? And it's almost like you can almost see the Ford government, uh, saying, you know what, just in case there's some liability issue, we'll do what we did with the long-term care homes. We'll just pass a law that says, uh, the executive administrators, whoever's doing this aren't liable if somebody gets killed because of what they're doing, you know, somebody dies. So it's, anyway, it's just outrageous that, you know, you, you spend all this time training nurses so that you can be taken care of if you're in an operating room. And then these characters come along to save a few bucks and say, oh, well, that's not important. What's important is we save some money. So anyways, I encourage everyone on this call that you should make an effort at the three-thirty at the Hamilton General next Wednesday to participate and to, to try to kibosh this, uh, crazy plan that they have. Thank you.
Ralph, if I could just speak to that. And just an example, Alexander, of what works in the past. So at my employer, they tried to, um, take away some nurses that take care of infants who are, you know, premature, like very, very, yes. We had a huge rally, Andrea Horvath came and we pushed back so hard, they, they stopped in their trap. So it does work. When you show up in one place, it, it works. And it well said right there, Ralph, too. Thank you.
Just as an aside, this, uh, surgical innovative fund has over thirty million dollars in it. And there are a number up to a thousand different projects. I did a little research. And what others, what other things have they got planned to mess up the system? Uh, Henry, I'm sorry, you're next. And then Malcolm.
Oh, you don't have to.
And then Kim.
Sorry, Janina. First of all, I want to say kudos to, uh, to, uh, Ralph and, and Janina and those of you who are involved in the Health Coalition. You're doing a fantastic job and, and, uh, we surely need more of you. Um, I, I just want to say, I'm going to sound like a broker record here, but, uh, we, we have a huge resource, um, that, that's being underutilized. And, and then I see a number of us here who are involved with either the Congress of Union Retirees of Canada or the Ontario Federation of Union Retirees. We need to see more locals bringing retirees back into the fold and encouraging retirees to stay involved. It's not happening, especially within the healthcare system. And, uh, you know, I, I know a number of locals don't even have retirees lists, but that needs to change because there's so much um, knowledge and, and experience behind us. Um, I have thirty years, uh, in, in healthcare. Um, I'm still very involved in the labor movement and, and we need to see more encouragement for, uh, for unions to bring the retirees in, into the fold and, and keep us, um, involved in what's happening. Uh, we can do so much. We can't expect, um, um, hospital workers to, to be, you know, exposed to what they're being exposed to. They're, they're, they're exhausted. They're doing their best. And we as retirees, how much free time do we have? I know we're, you know, some of us are busy, but I mean, we can go into the workplace. We can do things that, uh, the workers tend. And so we're here and we, we're, we're being underutilized and, and we want to be involved. And we're most directly affected by all of this.
Thank you, Henry. Um. Hang on. I'm reading the chat at the same time. So I have Malcolm, I have Kim, and then. Um we'll let Britt do her talk and then Suzanne and then Lena. Does that work? Okay, Malcolm.
Yeah, thank you. Um can everybody hear me? Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just um. I've been following this activity about the Health Coalition for a great number of years, doing all the excellent work, and you're still continuing to do excellent with uh amount of work here. But it's frustrating in that, of course, that many of these politicians at Queen's Park do not pay any attention to us. So we have to raise the awareness of what the hell is going on in this province. We have to mobilize the public like never before. We have to. Give clear examples about what has been happening to patients, especially the young kids now, what's happening at McMaster University, they closing down the emergency rooms there. And it's just a horror stories. But it's only really affecting. The people whose families are being affected. We've got to broaden out the message to the general public. And I'm a great believer in public power and public pressure. Because right now, the opposition parties, despite all their best efforts. Are not making a dent whatsoever in the hair in the, I call it the Harris Ford agenda. Which is to privatize Ontario's public healthcare system. And this has been a long going campaign. We know we have to find out those organizations that are financing the conservatives. We've got all these long term care home operators. Who are paying lobbyists big bucks to lobby the conservatives and also making financial donations to conservative MPPs. We have to put pressure on them too, brothers and sisters. We have to mobilize and get the word out that these people, and I know this may be a strong word. They are committing social murder. They know the policies that help people. They know people are dying. They know people are frustrated. They are committing social murder because they are allowing this to happen. We've got to strengthen the language. We have to really make this really. Alert and mobilize. We start small. We build, we hold rallies, great petitions. Many of us around in this, and I recognize a lot of faces. When we were fighting the Harris agenda, for example, we held what was known as protest actions, political protests, where we closed. The outfits down. I'm involved in educational work. We closed the province down for two weeks. We got the message across, right? We have public support because we had the facts and we had the agenda. And we had the public support and awareness, knowing what was going on. That's what we've got to start doing. We've got to be angry about this. They take us for granted, the conservatives. It's about time maybe we had a few occupations of some conservative MPPs offices. We did that before under the Harris regime. It's awareness that we need, folks. Why are we angry? It's because what they are doing. So public power beats political power every time.
Thank you, Malcolm. Kim?
Hi, um, anyone who knows me, I've been an active member of the Hamilton District Labor Council. I'm not new to the Hamilton Health Coalition either. Um I just have to bring this up because I'm sitting back. Kind of just knowing more information, but I think that. A lot of people on the Zoom call and know, and it's about the ORAs. Um I do represent the ORAs, members at the General Hospital. I'm not disputing that. Hospitals take classifications, they lower the education, they replace them for a lower wage. What I'm bringing to your attention here, and I'm trying to do it as respectfully as possible, is that these ORAs are being sought after. Um you were seeing in comments how they should be charged criminally. They are being harassed in a workplace. Um. I think. When we're at rallies or we're talking about it, if we can. Remember that these are our brothers and sisters, these are fellow workers. They're going and they're doing a job. They don't deserve what's occurring, what's happening to them. If we can be respectful and just keep it that we have an issue with what the government's doing. Not that classification. I'm not gonna debate. The education that's been mentioned here because it is different. Um and I don't want to debate the arguments that are coming forward. I just ask that you keep in the back of your mind. That these are workers that were standing with the education workers. Rallying, who will be on the picket lines. For Bill one twenty four. Thank you.
Kim, my perspective is Mr. McIsaac has decided to pit QP against ONA. It may not be, but that's my perception, and I think he should be the target. Uh he does want to cut costs. And we're at that. So before Suzanne and before Lena. I have, where is Britt? There you are.
Here.
You've moved on my screen.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Um thanks for letting me uh speak on this. I know a lot of us have been wondering, well. I I'm not necessarily part of a union, um or I'm not a medical professional, how do I take action? And so what we've been working on here at the Ontario Health Coalition. Is um a way for everybody from all different walks of life to take action. I'm gonna put it in the chat so you guys can follow along with me, but I'm also gonna share my screen right now. Just give me one moment. Is everyone able to see the Ontario Health Coalition website right here?
Mm hmm.
Okay, excellent. Um so here on the website, we've um. Put together something, so it's super simple, so everyone can follow it. One way that you can take action, we're trying to collect as many names as possible. To show right up front how how many supporters we have and how many people are against what the Ford government is doing. Um. I think immediately, my first reaction is. They want all my contact information. What are they gonna do with this information? Um, we're not using this for anything but to put pressure on the Ford government. We're not giving anyone your your name, your address, or any of your information. I know a lot of political parties have. Situations like this, and then you get tons and tons of emails. So we're not doing that. All we're doing is we're trying to get this collector um counter to go up to a million people. Right now, we're at six hundred and ninety. We haven't put anything forward yet. Um or haven't distributed any information, so more people will see it. So surely that will number will go up and will go up quickly. Um but I'm hoping everyone, if you're able to click that website. Just scroll right down into the section that says defend our public healthcare. Enter in your information, and then it will show up here, like Christine in Hamilton has just taken the pledge. That's all that will happen, and that just gives us. The ability to say, look, here, there are this many people that are supporting this issue. Um and it's number, like power numbers. Um. And then if you continue to go down where it says what's new, you can click this button here or on here. It um become a public Medicare defender. So you can click on either or, and it's gonna take you to this page here. So what we're asking everyone to do, once you become a public Medicare defender, you'll get some more information on how you can help as an individual. So spreading the word. Um. This right here is a pamphlet that you can print out and give to everyone. I know a lot of people don't feel comfortable immediately. Saying like, I I listened to this wonderful presentation last night. We need to let everyone know about this, but I I don't know how to express it and and tell others. So we've done the work here for you. Print this off, hand it out to everyone you know at work. Um at your place of workshop uh worship. Um any of your community groups, I I've heard a lot of different retiree groups. Um pass this around. And I can't stress how important it is to tell your friends and family to also come to this webpage, become Medicare defenders. Um and so that they can access these resources. Everyone can access it, but it's just getting the word out there. Um the last, then we have a situation here where there's a survey that you're able to fill out. And this year, we're just trying to to collect information on who's. Been affected already by privatization that's happening. Um in in our healthcare systems. And so they are charging people for for different medical procedures. A lot of them are medically unnecessary. Um. And so if you're able to fill out this survey. You click here. Um have you been charged user fees for healthcare? It'll give you some examples of what current things are, and if this has happened to you. I really, really urge you to just fill out this survey. It takes a few minutes. Um and that just gives us an idea of how many people are currently being affected by these changes that are being made. And say exit that. Um. Lastly, we talked about power numbers, and I've heard a lot about the wonderful rally that's happening on Wednesday. Um we're also planning a few rallies and. Our members are supportive of of the other events going on, so I encourage you to go to all of those events um to to join together. But I uh just wanted to let you know that there are gonna be four events happening. Um. And they're in, well, I guess we're in December now, but um on Friday, December the ninth, there will be a protest both in Niagara. Uh actually, it's in St. Catherine's, but it's with our Niagara Health Coalition and in Ottawa. Both of those will be held on the ninth between twelve and one P M. Um. If you become a Medicare defender, we'll send out all this information as well, or I can add it to the chat after this if others are interested. And then on Monday, December the twelfth. Um Windsor and Ottawa. Will also, so I already said Ottawa, Windsor and what is our other one? Toronto. Toronto will be holding um protests as well. Um so we'll be busing in people from all different areas. If this is something that you're interested in or gathering all of your friends to come to. Um we really just need to show our strength with everyone who's there. Um I while I'm on this website, I just want to show you a few other quick things that I think are really important. Um social media may not be a huge aspect of importance to you, but it is a wonderful way of getting information out there. I encourage you to look here and maybe younger generations that aren't on this call, because unfortunately, there aren't a lot of younger people. Get them to check out our social media pages. We share all the same information, also in video content. Um and so hopefully, they can share with their friends and family um to pass it on to another generation. I also just want to show you uh the key issues index here. If you have any questions about some of the numbers, we've heard a lot of wonderful, well, not wonderful, but. Statistics about horrific things that are happening. Um we've broken them all down into different issues where you can do your research if you're you're thinking about, and I encourage you to reach out to your MPP. Um you can use this kind of as a guide for information. Oops. Um is there anything else that I missed, Ross or Janina, that you want me to cover?
Janina, if I could, if I could just say that um this thousand million Medicare defenders um is also intended to be used as a petition as much as anything. It's a way to go around to your neighbors. You could actually do it on the doors. You could get people to sign up. And get them to sign up. They don't necessarily have to go on the website. Just get the information and we'll get the information put in. So that um uh. You know, we are getting more and more and more people committed, because what we need to show the government is that there are. Literally hundreds of thousands, and hopefully a million people in this province are willing to stand up and say. I will be a defender of Medicare, of public hospitals, and that gives people agency too. So thank thanks, Britt, that was great, and. I would just encourage Hamilton, the Health Coalition, to take this on and and add it to your list of things to do.
Wonderful. Um yes, I just, I do really want to encourage people that we aren't doing anything with this information. Um besides collecting them to to show it as a petition, but not to harass you with multiple emails, because I know that discourages people quite often.
Thanks, Britt. Um there is a charter challenge to Bill seven. Um the Ontario Health Coalition with. ACE, the Advocacy Centre for the Elderly, are filing one under the Charter. Um. What I do find about legal challenges, it takes a while, but it has to be done, and he has to be challenged. Now, I saw the media like C H C H. The other night on the eleven o'clock news, they had Monique Taylor questioning Sylvia Jones about all of this. The media on, in some cases, is very attentive. Other times, it's what they choose to. Do, uh hang on, I'm trying to see what else. Um for those who are interested. Canadian Blood Services has just been privatized with a fifteen year contract. Uh most, some of us might remember the Creever Commission and tainted blood scandal. So that one is a federal thing, so write your local MP and say, I don't like what's happened. Why did it happen? And as another concern, the Ontario Health. Were given marching orders to find. Efficiencies. In other words, to find money that they could save on healthcare. So it's still continuing, and it's not gonna stop. And on the issue of social murder, if you look up Professor Dennis Raphael from York University. He's written a couple of articles on that. Uh Doreen Nickel from Halton has written one and linked social murder with O D S P. Uh this. I agree with Malcolm. I think we need to start saying. Harsher words because four thousand people died in long term care. That's geriatric genocide, and there are a few of us on this call. That would be in the category to go to elder long term care. So there is an awful lot out there. And enough for me, Suzanne.
Um thank you, Janina. I'm I'm not sure where to begin. Um I keep adding items here. Um I'm Suzanne Clancy, a former Mohawk College faculty and an Ops proud OSU member. Um and president of the Ontario Federation of Union Retirees for the last uh many years. Um the Ontario Federation of Union Retirees has eighty five at the moment, eighty five. Um active affiliates of retiree organizations across. Uh retire, union retiree groups across the province. I'm told that we represent now close to a hundred thousand. Uh union retirees in the in in throughout Ontario. Um I I find that really rewarding, and I hope they're right. We don't have any specific way of verifying that, but just by. Uh the numbers of affiliation fees and the and the affiliation monies that are uh remitted to O F R. Uh we just had a our convention, our much delayed twenty twenty convention, we just had that in June. Uh and I can, I'm very proud to say that we've added several new members to the O F R Council. Uh and they're sitting in front of you this evening. Uh we have, of course, myself as president. We have Malcolm, who has long been my colleague. On the O F R Council. He chairs our political action committee. Uh we now have Henry. Henry stood for election and was elected in June. We have Tom Adderton. Uh and many of you might know Tom is the Secretary of the Hamilton District Labor Council. Uh we have Janina. Janina is agreed to be our um Ontario Health Coalition. And health critic on on O F R. And Lena Sutton was a longtime former. Uh O F R Council member. So we're, we 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 continue to be very well represented. Uh with some very, very strong advocates. And especially those from from Hamilton. So I'm very, very proud. Uh that those individuals, among several others, uh who stood for election at O F R Council, we have as first vice president now. Eddie Saint Marie, and Eddie Saint Marie was a longtime CLC representative. So that's. That's a very exciting initiative. But what I wanted to specifically mention is that we have a flag bearer in our amongst us this evening, O F R does, and it's Henry. Um and Henry has been uh out with the O F R flag, and if you haven't seen it, it's absolutely gorgeous. I don't, Henry will hold one up. He keeps one. I think he takes it to bed with him, I swear. It's a beautiful flag. Um I think it's three by five. And we had no idea the impact this flag would have. We were. And we had no idea the impact this flag would have. We were hope, when we ordered them. We hoped it would. Uh, but it's really come into its own in the last few months. And Henry has been uh out and about with over the last few weeks here in Hamilton with a flag. I ha, I still have uh two more here at the house. And Henry will be picking those up from me in the next day or so. And we're all over offers offering those uh to be used uh at the rally next week. So we have the flag and it has, it's a six foot flag pole. It's very, very hard not to notice this over flag. So um I, Henry is going to be the keeper of our flags and he is going to be uh in charge of that. I also realized tonight that we have a a huge banner. I had forgotten we have a big banner which can easily be turned into a flag. Uh, so that's another item that can be uh that that Hofer is more than happy to provide uh for the rally next week. Um, I I do caution that I'll need them back. They're very pricey. But it's so, it's so, the thing, so much has happened, even today. Uh, in some Zoom meetings I was involved in uh that we're going to have to order new flags. We're going to have to order fifteen more flags. And I'm telling, they're out, they are pricey, but thank God of over has some funds. But we will be ordering fifteen additional flags. So I wanted to to let this group know uh that um those flags are available uh for your use next week. Uh, I was just really stricken here, struck by the the information from the Health Coalition because I hadn't seen that. But I'm very pleased to say that Ofer was again out ahead of the game. Uh, and I have, I have permission to use this person's name. Uh, two or three weeks ago, Lena Sutton and I were talking. And she was just commenting about some of the medical tests that she had to be involved in. And she had to pay. And I I don't know, it just, you know, fortunately I've stayed reasonably healthy. But when she started going down the list of the medical tests that she had to pay for out of her own pocket, I I I was just amazed. I was just very surprised. And so I, it's going to be very important. I'm going to go on that survey now. Uh, that that was just mentioned, that Britt you just mentioned and fill that out. But I don't think people are realizing all the little and not so little medical testing that is not covered. And this is a horrendous problem if you're on a, 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 well, if you're on any kind of pension or any kind of income, these were not cheap tests. Lena very graciously sent me an article which is now going to be in the National Pensioners uh Federation Newsletter. It's a twenty-six page newsletter. I was on that call today. And Lena's information is going to be shared right across Canada now. Uh, through this National Pensioners Newsletter. It's going to be one of the articles over the Ofer logo. Uh, so it couldn't be more timely. Lena, you had, sorry, you have to go through these tests, but your timing has been perfect. Um, so uh, that's, that's just, it's interesting how all these things begin to fall, start to fall into place. So uh, I, you know, I'd be glad to answer any questions, but I did want to point out that we Ofer is very much behind this local campaign and any others across the province. We'd love to share our flag and our support in any way we can. And um I have access to a couple newsletters. So I'm prepared to um help and submit any, any articles or any information um that you you might want to do along with Janina. So thank you very much. Thank you very much uh for your time and I'm very, even though I'm tired after two Zooms today, I'm very glad I'm on this commit, this meeting tonight. Thank you very much, Janina. And Lena. And Malcolm and Henry.
Thank you, Suzanne. I put my email in the chat. It's the email to reach the Hamilton Health Coalition. So if you have questions. And if I can't answer them, I'll forward them on to the Ontario Health Coalition. And as an aside, our next meeting will be the seb, sorry, the ninth of January. It's a Monday. Not our usual last Monday of the month. We meet at local ten oh five in their boardroom and ideas out of this call will be put on the table and we'll have to start planning some actions of our own. Thank you, Suzanne. Uh, Lena. And then Michael. You're on mute, Lena.
Right. Thank you, Janina and the Hamilton Health Coalition for sponsoring this town hall. And I'm proud to say that Janina and Rolf are members of SOAR Chapter Ten in Hamilton, which is the Steel Workers' Organisation of Active Retirees. And when Rolf is now visiting his grandkids southwest, he's at our meetings. Janina attends our meetings now that we're having in-person meetings every month and they give updates on what's going on in the healthcare sector now. And we're very pleased with that. We support everything that the Health Coalition is doing. It's very important to have a fight back and as retirees, we have to stand up for what we gained over the years and that, especially when it comes to uh public healthcare. I have a couple of comments to make. First of all, with the Health Coalition website for Ontario, it's very important to have that, but unfortunately not all retirees and that are computer savvy that can go into that. And I do check the Health Coalition when we have uh our meetings. Janina brings out things, but also I send out a newsletter and always put a little flip in about what's going on with uh our healthcare in Ontario and uh what Ford is doing to not only healthcare, but everything else. And when we have those demonstrations and that, I wonder sometimes. And as a retiree, a member of the steelworkers, I've been on demonstrations, picket lines for every union I think there is. And yes, I've been on picket lines in that in the U S as well. I wonder where all of the healthcare workers are in this. And I know there's burnouts and everything else, but like with uh the education workers and that, there was an issue with uh the raise, the one percent raise and that, but don't forget what's going on there. And so very unfortunate that unfortunately, a lot of members within the healthcare, within education, yes, within our own union, and I'm proud to say the steelworkers have always stood by the N D P. Nothing is perfect, but they don't do everything right, but they're the only ones that's going to stand up for social justice and things that are important to us. And I always say the analogy. There's things I get peed off with, with the N D P was like a family. You have your disagreements, you get over it and you get back together and they're on our side. But that being said, when we have those demonstrations and that, if more health workers that were out supporting that, not only on the one issue, but all of the issues and all of the labor movement. And tonight with the town hall, and again, thank you to Janina and who organized it, but where's the rest of labor? Like I'm talking steelworkers, Opsu, Q P, Labor Council, and I thank those uh members from the labor movement, retirees and active members in their locals that are taking part in this because our public healthcare system is important to everyone. And as uh Suzanne, the tribute is to, yes. I'm going through the system. We can't find out what's wrong because I have so much inflammation in my system. They did a blood test first for rheumatoid arthritis, which cost me fifty-five dollars. They tried me with different uh craps of uh medications, which I think nearly killed me. And it was virtual visits over the phone with a rheumatologist describing this without even seeing me in office. And when I said to her, I can't take this. I have uh problems with diarrhea, heart, blah, blah, blah. She just put me on another one, but I got a new rheumatologist and she looked at bio uh therapy. Well, I had to get a T V test. I went to one clinic to ask, well, they said, well, if you want test one, it's uh fifty dollars. If you want test two, seventy dollars. I said, what's the difference? And I showed her what I need the test for. She said, reception says that doesn't mean anything to me. You have to pay cash for it. Okay. So I called another uh family health. Uh, sent her. Make the. Was twenty dollars.
What?
I wonder uh where all of this money goes. Who gets it? At the doctor's office, I had the tax disability credit done. It cost me eighty dollars. Some physicians, it only costs ten dollars, fifteen dollars, whatever. Who, who uh makes the decision on all of those fees? Well, I have to get an M R I. So I needed a copy of my last X trace. So go to St. Joe's in uh Hamilton. If I knew the name of the doctor, I didn't have to pay to get a copy. But if I didn't, I'd have to pay twenty dollars for, to get a copy of it. Well, if someone couldn't afford this, where would it go? And as I said, who regulates all of those fees from doctors and clinics and that? Where did it go? Do they go back into the private uh health uh clinics? Do they go back into our public or whatever? And the other thing I learned as well. Once you're over sixty-five, I'm sixty-eight, I have to get physical on my right hand because of your arthritis or whatever. Because I don't have a benefit for it. If I paid for myself, I could get it right away. But because uh all hip would pay for it, there's a month or more waiting for it. So who controls all of those fees and who gets them and everything? And when it comes to uh the demonstration on December the seventh, we will be there. And as I said, I do our newsletter now and put out all of the things that are going on in healthcare. And I really thank Janina and Rolf for bringing everything to the forefront. And we need everyone out supporting this, not just with one issue, but as others have said, we need a province-wide demonstration, not only just uh one issue with healthcare where they're cutting out nurses in the aware in Hamilton, but all of the cuts that are in healthcare because healthcare is very important to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Lena. You and I need to sit and talk about the list of fees and who pays what, where and why in cash. Now, the question I saw in the chat about signs. Uh, you saw the signs on the uh presentation Britt had. I still have a few. So if you want to sign, email me, but you'll have to pick it up or I'll have to make arrangements. I am now reliant on bus transportation. Um, what else was there? The comments about intimidation will, we're aware that the employer does not like people speaking out, has been known to fire people. I'm thinking of the P S W at the home Roslin. She spoke to the press and she was let go. And of course, no, we didn't fire her. We just didn't need her anymore. So that has to be looked at very carefully. So now I have Michael and then I have Alexander. You're on mute, Michael.
Sorry about that. I say this with the, with the greatest respect. What unites us here is a common desire to fight the privatization of the healthcare system, the degradation of the hospital system. And the extent to which we focus on individual operational decisions of hospitals. Uh, we distract from the Ford government. We, we take away the opportunity to apply political pressure. And we do it during a week when the Health Coalition is organizing rallies across the province to apply pressure on the Ford government. So I would just urge that the rally keep in perspective the relative importance of the operational decision that may have been made at H H S relative to the enormous degradation the Ford government is doing to care. And that the fact that McMaster is operating at a hundred and forty percent capacity, et cetera, should be the themes that we're pushing. I would just say that with the greatest respect.
Right. Thank you, Michael, for reminding us. Alexander?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I guess my question is for Britt. Um, this is regarding the Ontario Health Coalition website. Is that the central repository for all of the factual data that's quantifiable that could be, say, put into a PowerPoint slide presentation and presented to a group of people?
It could be arranged.
Um, I, I, I would say like there is a lot of information there. Is it the central area? Absolutely. There's a bunch of different resources that you can find online. Um, I can tell you we, we spend a lot of time compiling all this information. Um, and it is kept up to date. Um, if you also do go to the top right-hand corner, there's a search box. So if there's a particular act or something in your area that you wanted to research, because since there is so much information on this page, um, you can use that search box and it will bring up different um situations that have been dealt with or that we're working on.
Yeah, I think that's the concern that I have is that there's so much information that just scanned through very quickly. And I thought, oh, my goodness. I mean, somebody going there, how? Um, how can I say this? What is the most important credible data that they should be exposed to? That's going to open their eyes and their minds to the fact that we are potential, well, not potentially, we are in trouble. We're, we're heading towards a situation where the Ontario government is going to prioritize us. And it's going to hurt us. And what is that key amount? You know, what is that key data that can be made visible to the people who are coming to the website?
I think the best decision for right now is to focus directly on our, the cause that we're discussing tonight. So it's becoming a public Medicare defender. Um, because you're right, there is a ton of information and it can be overwhelming. Um, and then once you're in that, that area, you're able to look at that pamphlet. It gives you the, the basic breakdown of what the situation, what the Ford government's doing. Um, and then if there's something in particular that you want to know about, say um statistics on open hospital beds or how many physicians and nurses there are per patient, then you can look in the key issue section and find more of that data. Um, if there's a particular question that you have, you can certainly reach us on social media or send us an email. Um, so we can answer that directly or point you in the direction for that. I, I'm going to see if I can add a few links to like basic resources while we all speak as well.
Yeah, put them in the chat there. I think that would be great. Yeah, no, Alexandra, I think your, your, your comments, well taken. I think that this point in time, um, the most powerful thing that's happening is just almost listening to the, to the media every day. Um, you know, I've never been one that's wanted to say that our healthcare system is in crisis because I think that encourages the privatization of it. But I think we've now actually reached the point where there's a truth to that. And that's, uh, we can, we can see it happening very visibly. And we also know what the agenda is and which is why we're here. Uh, we know the government is underfunding the system. They're not encouraging staff. They're driving staff out. And just like they're doing in the uh development sector with the green belt or in education with, with private schools. Um, all through the whole, uh, the healthcare system, they're trying to figure out ways to give money to people in the private sector so they can make lots of money. And so the wealthy can get services they need. And we don't get the services that we need. I mean, I think that's what the agenda is and that's what.
And we don't get the services that we need. I mean, I think that's what the agenda is. And that's what, you know, at this point in time, what we're focusing on, and we try and put that on the the website, but I think the way to really drive that home is to go out on the street. I would encourage people to knock on doors. I would encourage you to go to your churches, to your union halls, to your bridge clubs, to your, you know, curling club, to hockey games, to wherever you go. And talk to people there, your neighbors, your family, get them to sign up as a Medicare defender. Give them a card. You know, we can make, help you get all those things together. And that's the way that we drive this home. We hear what people have to say, the concerns they've got. We figure out how to bring us all together in this common fight. And we keep it up for the short term and stop them as much as we can right now. And in the long term, we build a base of support. So that we both change the government and make it impossible for the next government, no matter who it is to go back. And they just have to reinvest in the public healthcare system and build it because it is the best. It's the cheapest. The work is out there. And I say this all the time with somebody who spent my time studying it. You know, when you, when you ask people, why do you think for-profit is better? And they say, well, the market's better. But then you say, all of the science, all of the studies, all of the experience of patients who go into these clinics and have to pay money. It says it's worse. There's really nothing out there which says that the for-profit system works. It doesn't. It's only a system that works to make people money, a, a, a small number of people money. And our response to that is all of us coming together and doing what we, we can to stop that. You know, I know we're, we're, we're getting on here. I'm not trying to cut people off from speaking, but I, I want to make sure that we, that I say a big thank you to everybody here and really encourage you to be involved. Because we count on you. We all count on each other to, to make this, to make this happen and to stop the government from doing things which are terrible for us. And terrible for our communities and terrible for our society. So thanks again. And you know, Janice is in the meeting, but we're now down to half of what we had when we started. And there's a couple more people, but I do want to thank you. And I want to thank the other speakers for excellent interventions. And let's come together and, you know, make, make this work on the street. Thanks very much again.
I have James and then Henry, and then we will say good night. James? You're on mute. There we go.
Both my, my wife and I have been dealing with the health system now for the last three years. She's dealing with cancer and we've been to all three hospitals. And she's had major, major situations in all three. We have gotten to see the cuts and the damage on a first, on a firsthand basis there. Do you still see me or hear me?
We can hear you perfectly. We can't now. You're on mute, James. Let's come back to you when you get yourself off mute. Henry?
Yeah, I took one of those ones by saying, you know, we have to be very careful here. Because some people are perceiving this as an attack on the workers. And we have to realize those people who are filling these positions are not there. You know, to, to, for selfish persons, people in healthcare are there because they care. People who are taking these jobs are taking these jobs because they want to better themselves and improve their, a lot of their families. So, you know, and as was mentioned before, this is a device to divide and conquer between QP and ONA. We can't let that happen. We have to be sensitive to the, to the feelings of these people that are, are taking these positions. They're not doing it out of, you know, out of greed or like I said, as being someone who was in healthcare for 30 years, I know people are there because they care, because they want to help. And, and we don't want to, you know, make them think that we are attacking them and, and nothing's further from the truth. We're there to support. We want to see people improve their lives in life. We're not attacking the workers. We're attacking the policies of government and of management.
Thank you. I think that's really important to note. And I just want to reaffirm that we are a nonpartisan group. And that we, although there are so many, so much union support, it's, this message is directed to everyone. It's not directly to union workers or to people who are working in hospitals. A lot of these things, if you reach out, the people who are really discussing these things with their friends and family are often patients. I'm an individual with multiple disabilities. And I try and remind my friends and family constantly, if I was born south of the border, how much, how, how expensive it would be to live. And just individual physicians appointments. So I really encourage everyone to speak out, not only for the nurses and, and and doctors and, and staff and, and health services, but for everyone, especially the vulnerable people in our, in our population that are in different equity-seeking groups that can't speak for themselves.
James, are you able to talk or are you passing? Okay. Last words to Lena and then we will.
Do you? Janina. Just to wrap up, we had our International SOAR Conference in Las Vegas in August. We had two speakers on the Canadian healthcare because our American comrades were very interested in our healthcare system and that. And that's why it's so important. We have to protect everything that we have. Our SOAR chapter 10 in Hamilton made a motion back before the election that we were going to make a donation to Hamilton Health Coalition because of all of the work that you do. And it's great work and very informative. And again, I thank you for all of the time that you put into it and Ralph and others. And also we'll be making from Chapter 10, donation to the Ontario Health Coalition, especially in their fight on the long-term care bill, which is very important to everyone because most don't realize we do get older. And if you have seniors and that in your family that we talk, require long-term care, you can see what's going on. And I urge everyone here because both myself and Bob make donation each year to Hamilton or to the Ontario Health Coalition. Christmas is coming up. And I know many families might have members in their family that don't have as much as others do and might have other commitments and that in the community, but also the Health Coalition is very important. They fight for help for everyone, especially those that are in need of healthcare services. And if we lose that, just imagine that people had to pay for it, especially those that can't afford it. And I challenge everyone on this call. Join the Ontario Health Coalition. Make a donation too. Yeah, you don't get a tax receipt. That's not important. What's important, we have to fight for what we have to preserve it. Thank you. And everyone on the call, I hope you have a great holiday season. Help those in need. I don't care about gifts and that for myself or Bob on Christmas morning, only those in need. And I hope everyone has a safe, a happy and a peaceful, healthy new year. Thank you.
Thank you. So to conclude, one, I thank all the speakers. I thank all of you for your thoughts. If you need information, the Ontario Health Coalition has our links and I think Britt put them in. And if you want to attend our meetings, you're more than welcome. The Charter Challenge is looking for donations because that is going to cost a fair amount. The December 7th rally, which is Aim at Mr. McIsaac. And not to be confused with Mike, who is the new president of Ofer. Got an unfortunate last name. So on that note.
Kirk, not over.
Pardon?
Mike is the president of Kirk.
I know. That's what I said. Um, Ed, where are you? You want to call? Adjournment? I guess he's gone. So we were now adjourned.
I move adjournment.
You move adjournment. And thank you for being here. I have a lot of thoughts to, to think, a lot of things to think about. So good night. The best of the season.
Michael.
We'll see you on the picket lines.
Good night, everybody.
Michael, before you hang up, can we arrange to speak sometime? I'd like to speak to you about what we can do. No, Michael Hurley.
Ah, okay.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Thank you. Good meeting, everybody. Good luck on the streets. Talk to you soon.
And if you want a flag, contact me.